Good evening and welcome to the June 5, 2018, Millis School Committee Meeting. Before we begin, I want to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under "School Committee," and all times are approximate. Start with the roll call vote. Ms. Briggs.
Present.
Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Ms. Roach.
Here.
Ms. Gibbons will be absent tonight. We have no teacher rep. And then for the student rep, Josh.
Present.
Present. Jody, has anyone signed in for open session?
There's none.
Okay. I want to go a little bit out of order from the action items. First, student rep, any report?
Yeah, so graduation practices are happening today and tomorrow in the gym. And then the senior banquet is at 6:00 PM on June 6, tomorrow, at Primavera. And graduation is June 7 at 6:30 in the gym. And then class day is earlier in the gym as well.
Is that it, Josh?
That's it.
So Josh, this is your last meeting?
This is my last meeting.
How many years? Four years? Have you done all four, or three?
I think it's just three, but...
Well, it is a tradition, when it is your last meeting, that we, the school committee, present you a gift. So come on up. It is a...
Can you open it?
Oh, yeah. Let's open it. It's not live.
It's not live.
Please hold it up to the camera so everyone knows where you'll be attending. The camera's out there. Oh, there's actually two. There are two. Thank you for all your hard work. This is not the... This can be a little bit boring and mundane, but you've done a great job over the years. Thank you, Josh, and good luck in school.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Let's go to the time of learning.
Time and learning. We have the high school personalized learning showcase tonight. Our art teacher, Carol Hagerty, and a couple of students have joined us to show how they approach personalizing learning in the art class.
That's right. Hi, and I just want to thank you all for inviting us to come. We're really excited to show you what we're doing in art design and new media. I have Kaylee Corsi and Mara Fagan, who took the half-year art design and new media class in the fall. But their portfolios are online, so they're going to show that to us. But what I had up here, in case you're interested, is the website for the art department at Millis High School. And it's available at millishighschoolart-weebly.com. And I can give you a card with that on it if you want to take a look at it. And it does have links to lots of student portfolios and AP portfolios and class descriptions and things like that. But rather than listening to me talk, I thought maybe we'll kick it off with Kaylee showing her assessment portfolio, which is within its learning. This class is delivered through its learning, and the students make portfolios within its learning.
So, as Mrs. Hagerty said, we took it in the fall. So in art design and new media, we learn how to create art on the Internet, how to be safe on the Internet, and like different tools we can use on the computer. So the first thing we did was just learn about computer organization, file extensions. This is a selfie I took and learned how to put it into its learning. And it was helpful definitely later on with other projects and in other classes too, to be able to upload pictures on to the Internet. Next, we have a words as image. So we just put different words into an image to represent ourselves. So I have like tennis writing, family, yoga, all different things I like to do. I picked the color blue because it's one of my favorite colors. And the elephant, I like animals, and I just thought it was a cute elephant. Then I have another words as image, and it's lyrics to an Ed Sheeran song inside a picture of him. So the song is "Castle on the Hill." And if you click on it, it's a link that leads you to YouTube. We're going to wait.
I think we're not going to go to the YouTube channel, but trust me, it does work. That was a fun part of the class, because we got to listen to a little snippet of everybody's song, if they were successful getting their links in there.
All right. So now is the color temperature in Adobe Illustrator. So this was at the very beginning. We were learning how to use Adobe Illustrator. We're learning about colors, like cool colors and warm colors, and just how to use Adobe Illustrator, kind of playing around with it a little bit. So that's my first one. And then my second one. I made that. It's kind of like a compass type thing. And you can see how like the warmer and cooler colors kind of like bring each other out. Next, the pen tool silhouette worksheet was in Adobe Illustrator. So it just, we used it to learn how to use the pen tool in practice before we made more projects like the silhouette. So that's my example of a silhouette. We like took a picture on Photo Booth and uploaded it into Adobe Illustrator and used different borders and stuff. Then down here, I changed the borders and the background, some of the coloring, to make it look different. The next one was the digital self-portraits. So this was definitely one of my favorite. We took a picture and we put it into Adobe Illustrator and used the pen tool to make this. Then down here, we could do a different stroke, so it kind of looks like a painting or drawing down here. And then later, we added color, and I added the background of San Francisco. I've been there one time, and I want to go back. So it could, if we kind of represent ourselves, it was really fun to do. Now is the value and color theory and the quilt project. So here we have a scale. We were learning about different shades of colors and color and value. Now down here is like a color scheme that I put into a quilt. We then made the monogram, so we learned about using different fonts and changing them around and representing ourselves in a monogram. So those are my initials, and then there's one in more color down here. Then we have mobile apps and grid systems. So we used InVision, and I worked with my friends Janie and Alexis to make this app. It's called Pinpoint. It's, if you've ever heard of the app Shazam, it's kind of inspired by that. So we used it. So like if you had a book that you didn't know who it was by, or you wanted to know more about it, you could use your phone to scan it, and it would show you more about the book. And you can also use it for movies and TV shows and lots of different things. It works on Mrs. Hagerty's phone.
So if you want to see it.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, sure.
You can just do a quick down. It's just a, it's a prototype, but so you can see here's Pinpoint. And so what would you, so if you were reading a book and I see it, I might point this at it and click books, and it's going to tell me that it's "The Giraffe and the Goat" by Jane Pasquale Antonio. So it's a prototype, and you can actually click through. TV show, you know, it was on TV, so it was their idea. And I actually saw an app online that was similar to this. And right now, this was from one of the PBL projects that you set, and they're just prototypes, but I can imagine down the road actually developing these. You know, already some students have these where they go out to Google Maps and to different articles and things like that, so.
So after we read the apps, we did our introduction to Photoshop. So we just started out taking pictures on Photo Booth and editing them. So I made the background black and white with myself in color. And then I did the same thing down here another day, tried it again. Then we used layers on Photoshop to make a hamburger. So we had to have a different layer for each of the things, like the buns, the toppings, the burger, the pickle on the side. We used shadows and color. These, this shows all the different layers for everything in the burger. Then we had, we did 12 days of Photoshop, so every day we tried something different in Photoshop. Here I have watermelon, and in this slice is like blueberries instead of watermelon. Next, it was like a pop icon on a sculpture, so I put Harry Potter's face on the swings. Then this was like literal interpretation. So this is Hopper from the show Stranger Things, and he has like grass on his hat and shirt, so it's supposed to be like a grasshopper. Then here is a hybrid animal called a cataphin, the baby elephant on a kitten. Then we have the trading cards. So this was just like all different, all of my projects that we put on trading cards. And in class, we like showed each other our projects and traded them with other people so we could all remember.
Because in a few years, some of those might be really more valuable than others, just like some trade. All right. And Mara is going to show you her portfolio now, right? Okay. Come on. I think her is right here, open. So do you, would you like Kaylee to scroll through, and you can say it's going?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to stand over there? Okay. Good job stepping over the cord.
I am Mala Mnojessi. This is after me out working for my dreams. And excited my pants are now. I'm nervous.
All right. Good job.
This is my plan. I think book clubs. I like book clubs, movie clubs, and test clubs, anything else. And for, for, and for, and for. This is a festival of course for artists and making music for a camp. Just to be loved.
All right.
This is my colored hat.
No, no, you're good.
This is my picture of me and take pictures of myself and some of me, not saying my name. This is my cartoons from old paper, not saying his name.
You can say your name.
Kyle Lopez.
Kyle Lopez.
Yeah. This is my number one of late. Yeah, it's a great idea. This is my color palette, I think, of my son's eyes. My son's eyes.
So it's eyes, it's my colors.
My biopumps, Carlos. And this is my two ninjas of my life.
Right. Did you tell everybody what your dream is?
Uh, ninja, yeah.
Excellent.
This is my ninja squad.
All right. So I don't know, I think you're going to have to go show them how this works. You want to go show them?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is my ninja squad.
What does it do?
And this is like the steps.
Oh, cool.
Did you make them?
It's a ninja app.
Yes.
All the different obstacles?
Right. Because Mara wants to train for...
What else does it have? The rings?
To be a ninja warrior, so.
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that.
Of everything, you have to practice.
And rope swings.
Rope swings.
Oh, yep.
And walk, walk, tip.
Well, the wall.
Yeah. The hardest foot.
This is for me and my defense.
Who are they?
Maggie and Madison.
Maggie and Madison. Mara did that one. Good job.
Excellent.
Is there anything else, Mara?
This is a picture of me and one of my favorite clothes and piece of shirt. And this is my funny joke, call this me.
Of course.
And this is my another funny joke, call other and cheat us together.
I got that.
And this is my burger of the thing and my dress outside. This is my color pages, I can't find my step.
That's it? Good job. Wonderful. Great job. Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us to come and present.
Mrs. Hagerty, may I ask a question of the students, if you don't mind? I'm sorry. But Kaylee and Mara, I'm really wondering, because art media and new, art design and new media is a combination of art and developing all your computer skills and putting together a digital portfolio, can you talk a little bit about what you think are the pros and cons of kind of the marriage of art and computer? Would it be more fun to do just art alone without the computer, or do you like it together?
I definitely like it together. I think there's definitely good things about having art that isn't on the Internet. But on the Internet, you can like use other people's ideas and kind of make, like use them as inspiration. And there are a lot of different tools that you can, like you can do things on the Internet that would be a lot harder to do by hand. So it's cool to be able to have like access to those things while learning about like how to use the Internet also.
How about you, Mara? Do you like using the computer for art?
I like those.
Mara also carries a sketchbook around with her and came to class with her sketchbook, so she likes the markers and the, right? She likes ball.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Janie off? Do you have any words? Turn this off. Yeah, you can. Yeah, no more. There's no more presentation.
I'd like to go back to the action items. First is the consideration to approve the May 8, 2018, school committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we approve the May 8 meeting minutes.
I get a motion. Second, motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next action item is consideration to approve a transfer of salaries from school choice to general fund. There is a memo in your packet, and what the memo is, is there's, there's a budget surplus of about 150, not about, 150,375 left in Fund 10. And that was, that's coming from three main sources. Ed reform in $75,000, lane savings, $41,000, almost $42,000, and savings from subs, close to $33,000. So for a total of $150,000, 150,375 left in Fund 10. And there is a motion or an idea to move, not a motion, to, not yet, to move from the school choice fund to the general budget. Any questions?
I have a question. Sorry. So I'm new. And so if we don't move it, we lose it type thing, or like that's why we're moving it? Okay. Just clear.
Well, we could, we could do, we could use it for other things if we wanted to.
Okay.
So we, it's operating, it's money that's in the operating budget. Yes, if we don't allocate it to something else by June 30, it would go back into, it would go, get turned back and would ultimately get, turn into free cash a year from November.
Okay. But if we carry it over, we can use it next fiscal year for the school.
Right. School choice. Mr. Chair, also, because we have more salaries allocated to school choice than we get in every year, school choice would be and is drawn down each year.
As a running deficit.
So by transferring salaries out of school choice, it allows us to maintain a better balance in the school choice.
And historically, when it's come time to reducing budgets, we've pushed, we've pulled back and cut back on expenses, supplies. And so we're probably not funded nearly where we need to be. So when we have this kind of end of the year savings, we'll take it out and we'll be able to spend it. We won't, we won't be in a position to turn back any money because we weren't, we weren't budgeted adequately initially. So we will, we'll, we'll spend the money. If we ever get into the position where we're millions of dollars ahead, which will never happen, it's hypothetical, there'd be a different conversation.
Right, right.
And we also, we also pre-purchase out of, out of district placements as well, so we can do that. So there's plenty of places for us to spend appropriately at the end of the year. And this is, every year that I've been on, we pretty much had one of these. It just depends on how much it is per year.
Okay.
Anything, Ms. Roach?
No, that covers it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Conroy.
In here, there's also a projection of a revolving fund. Does this include or exclude this 150,000?
This is not including the transfer. This is prior to the transfer. It's as of May 31.
So this would mean that free cash will end up being, yeah, sorry. School choice will end up being around 457,000 as of June 30, where, so to Mr. Calo's point, we're, we're spending next year roughly 200,000 more than we're bringing in. So this is going to allow us to project to be at, at the end of fiscal 19, we'll have about 250,000 instead of being down to 100,000.
Or is it, hasn't been taken off yet?
It has not been.
So it's, right, so, okay.
Right. So, correct. So that will be our carryover.
So the carryover will be 457. Three, seven, eight. 457, 887.
Yeah.
Yep. So 457, 887 will be the carryover. And to, to Mr. Conroy's point, where I don't know exactly what the projections are next year, but they're probably going to be very close to that 700,000, right? And so we, we need that money because we just, we're not bringing in enough money. Eventually, this fund will have, we'll have problems with this fund, and that's part of our strategic planning conversation to have tonight as well, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we authorize the transfer of salaries from the school choice to the operating budget in the amount of 150,375.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's been carried. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is consideration to approve donation advertising to Millis Football.
Mr. Cravey.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Brian Cravey, a social studies teacher in the high school, is our new football coach for, varsity football coach for the upcoming school year. And I asked him to come tonight to give a little bit of information about some upcoming events, but also to ask the committee for approval. Business in town has generously offered to donate something that has a logo on it, so.
So I just wanted to introduce myself as the, very proud of this, very honored and humbled by this. I played for Millis back in 1994 when we won the Super Bowl. I coached here from 1997 to about 2014, and I have been out of it for a few years, and I have small children. But the timing has been perfect. I've been working very, very hard to create this. And what I mean by that is I've been going out to businesses and community, trying to build attraction to our school and for our kids. It's been extremely well. And one particular business had offered me in our first meeting to buy new practice shirts. Now, this event, which is happening on June 23, is part of it. So when people are offering donations to us, what we are doing at the event is saying to them, I just don't want money. I want to give back to you. So we will do raffles and things to try to bring in people to help not only the football program, but the entire community. So that one issue that Mrs. Gustafson brought up was, what they said is we'll, we'll buy the shirts, but we'd have to put the logo on the practice shirt. That's why I invited you tonight to ask you about that. I can tell you more about this if you would like, but it's super exciting, very, very Nothing has ever been done like this. I've been in Millis my whole life since 1976. Never seen anything like this. I'd have to thank John Chase. John Chase owns this business called Promotions in a Box. He has put in an incredible amount of time and resources because he sees the genuine nature of what I'm trying to do. And as it's been going, I want to tell you that it's extremely positive as they see that I'm not trying to get money out of them. I'm trying to build community with them. And it happened immediately with this particular shirt situation, which I wanted to ask permission for the logo on the shirt. So practice shirts, that the kids will be wearing at practice. It's nothing to do with game uniforms. We have a contract with Rydell, but it's what it is. We buy our helmets and shirts, game stuff, from them. But this is really a show of support that I'm very proud of, from what I've seen so far as continuing.
So, Coach, welcome aboard. And it looks like you're doing some good things, and you are clearly vested in the town, in the school, in the program. So that's, that's a good thing. I can only see good things coming from this.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, and I'll start by saying that some of them may not be, I'll, I'll ask them in this meeting.
Yeah.
And it may not be for you to answer. It may be for the superintendent and you to go back to Chuck Grant.
Sure.
Because I think most of the questions that I have would be towards, probably geared towards Chuck. So the question is, do you have practice jerseys now?
Not that I know of, as I cleaned out the area.
So they, what have they been wearing in the past? I know you haven't been around for a couple of years, but when you were here in '14, what would they wear at practice?
Regular shirt, like not anything nice, just old practice shirts from years past.
So have practice shirts, and once again, you may not have the answers to this. Have practice jerseys in the past been funded by the school? And if they have been funded, when was the last? And if they have been funded, when was the last time we purchased practice jerseys? Sounds like they were.
As far as I remember, and I've been around a long time, it's always been the school and not from outside.
Sure. So that's, that's a couple of questions that I had about that. My, my other question is, and I don't, wouldn't there be a better benefit to the business, which I think is great that you're going out and talking to businesses, with some sort of banner, sign, some sort of advertisement? Not on the jersey, because it's practice, so who's really going to see that? They'll be seen by the parents washing them if they bring them home. And some people driving by. But if there's a, a banner or some sort of sign and it's at the field, everyone who uses the field for any event would see it, so.
That was also part of it. So whenever we get a donation from a business, we're offering them a sign. So they will have a sign. But when I, when I said that, to him that, he didn't care too much about the sign. What he wanted to do with the donation was very specific. I want you to buy the new practice shirt. First, he said shirts, like game shirts. And I said, we can't do that.
Okay.
And so I said, practice shirts would be great if that's what you want to do. I mean, it's his money he's giving to me and that's what he, what he asked for. So that was my, I said, sure, I mean, I would love to do that. And so anybody else who's donating gets a sign.
Mr. Cravey, the, by sign, do you mean something temporary at this event? Because otherwise it has to.
I won't have those done for the event. It would be for, for the fall during the games.
So anything more permanent has to come before this committee for approval?
Yes, sure. If that were to come up, yes.
That's it, that's all I have for now. Anyone else, Mark?
No. I have the question, so I get, one question I do have is, what's the contract that we, that we couldn't have them buy the game jerseys? Is there?
As far as I know, because I met with the rep from Rydell, who I, as soon as I was hired as a coach, one of the first people I talked to.
Yep.
And Chuck has known him many, many years. And he's always been the uniform guy.
Yeah.
And so I would assume, and I don't know if that's 100%, that's a good question. Since we've been doing business with them for a very long time, I didn't want to mess that up. And do something that I thought was, at the moment, when he asked me about the game jerseys, I just thought in my, in my head, well, that's, that's a different entity in that we get helmets from them, we get shoulder pads from them, we get the jerseys and the pant, the game pants from them.
Yeah, but we pay for those though, right? They're not giving them to us.
Right.
So I'm just, and I'm not advocating that we move it to the game jerseys. I'm just wondering, if we're buying them, unless they're giving us something, if we sent them a screen for a patch or something and said, hey, we're buying the jerseys and we want you to drop ship them to a screen printer and they're going to put, you know, if they're putting names and numbers on them, then you're going to, and we want you to put that on too. I don't see how Rydell should have any issue.
You're right.
With.
Mr. Conroy, are you suggesting that this advertisement be on the game jersey?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just, I was just trying to understand what.
Like NASCAR with all the patches.
What the, what the con, what the, we, we can't, because what was stated was, we can't because Rydell is, and I'm not sure that Rydell should.
Well, why couldn't he pay for the uniforms through Rydell? Why does it have to be for the jerseys?
I think that's what, I think that's what Mark's alluding to.
Right, we're paying, if Rydell was donating the uniforms.
So with the donation from the company, the business, couldn't they donate for the game jerseys? Or they want to donate for the jerseys, but they want to have their logo on it? That's the hangup?
Yes. I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Okay.
My thing is Rydell shouldn't, unless Rydell is providing it, providing us some compensation or value, they shouldn't, if we want, and I'm not saying that we should, I'm just saying, if we want, it's just like, it's our jersey. It's like if we want to put names on them, we put names on them and we, you know, the screen printer or whoever does it.
Well, you alluded to the contracts. Do we have to go with like a specific state contract for uniforms? Or it doesn't matter who we buy the uniforms for? And you were just going with who we had because it has been precedent?
Correct.
Is there no, like, state contract that we have to buy uniforms through? I don't know what the rules are here, so I'm just asking.
So I'd be, Chuck, questions.
Yeah.
But I, but I also don't know what we're asking right here. I think let's, let's focus back in on whether this committee will grant approval to put the logo of Millis House of Pizza. How big is the logo going to be?
It's going to be on the sleeve.
It's on the, on the arm?
Probably, no.
So nothing ridiculously gaudy?
No.
Okay. And it's going to be just on a sleeve?
Just on the sleeve, yeah.
Okay. So I think the question is, for tonight, for Coach, is whether we will approve the donation of $1,400. And the other reason why we have, we would have to approve it is because it, it's tied to advertisement, so. And quite honestly, when this policy was revised in 2011, and I was on the committee, and Mr. Conroy was on the committee, and Ms. Gustafson was sitting here, there was no discussion about clothing. So this is a new, we never, ever, even though it says property and, and our legal counsel says that technically the uniforms would be property, so it falls under the thing, we never had this, we never thought about this. So this is a new, it's a new thought process. And I'm glad that you're not looking at game jerseys. I think that would be odd.
I just didn't feel like it was appropriate.
Yes, I agree with you. I agree with you on that, so.
That was my, only my intuition. You know, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, but, and that's, by choice is different than we, we can't because this, because Rydell has a, has a, has a, has something written that limits what we do with products we're buying from them.
So are the practice jerseys going to be Rydell? Or they're just going to be another brand? So you're getting, you're still getting what you want for the practice jerseys?
Correct.
We still should ask the question of.
I will.
I mean, I'm not throwing any water on, on the getting, you getting the practice jerseys. But there's a part of me that says you shouldn't have to be working the streets to get practice jerseys. Why haven't we?
Well, that was part of the first thing I was saying about building community.
No, I get that. No, 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 and that, that's not a negative reflection. I think that's great. But there's still a piece of.
Question is, when did, when did the practice jerseys stop being bought?
I'm not sure they have stopped.
And when's the replacement schedule?
Yeah.
So like I said, there's questions.
Right. For me, from my point of view, to be honest, right, there's been talk about no team. And so from my point of view, I've been working extremely hard to dispel that claim. And so for me to have a nice practice shirt that says Mohawk Pride on it, I've already bought T-shirts for the kids before I really had any money, on my own. I bought T-shirts to give to the kids in school so that people, I mean, so for me, to have those kids have a nice shirt, but also at the event.
Right, but we're not fighting, we're not, do not take any of our line of questioning as they're fighting.
You don't see where I'm coming from?
No, I get that.
Yeah.
So here's what I would say, because I am only one of five.
Yeah.
Even though only four are here tonight. I, I would never support anything, tobacco products, alcohol products, or any sort of, even if they want to donate, even, I just think that we'd want to stay, I would want to stay away from that. So as you're out there.
Yeah.
I think we should be mindful of that because we want to, we want to stay within the lines.
Of course.
So that's no, I'm just giving you proactively telling you, because there may be other businesses that want to jump on board that may not be appropriate for a school setting.
Absolutely. I agree.
Anything?
No, I have, my question was answered. I just want to know where the logo is going.
And Mr. Chair, I believe our approval has to be two layers. One, any donation over $1,000, the committee also approves.
Okay.
So it, it needs approval, one for the donation and then two for the advertising on the donation.
I do have one other question. Is the $1,400 enough to get all of the practice shirts? Or are you?
It was actually $1,500. And it was probably right on spot. Actually, I got to find, you know, I think there were 20 apiece.
Okay.
So let's say someone says, we're going to give you a donation over $1,000. How does that, what do I do at that point?
You just let me know and we'll do a memo and the school committee approves it at their next meeting.
Okay.
You say, thank you very much, very gracious of you.
Tell them to hold the check for two weeks.
Yeah.
Don't, don't take it before we, before our following meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to avoid, we want to make sure we're doing it in order.
Yep.
The tricky part will be during the summer when the committee meets less frequently. But just let me know and we'll, we'll, we can call a special meeting if it's time sensitive.
Sure. Okay.
And if you think you're going to build up a bunch, we'll, we'll, we're probably going to have at least one meeting a month in July and August, but it's sometimes difficult to get that at the end of August. But your season has already started, so we can, you can coordinate with the superintendent. If you think you've got a bunch of stuff coming in.
Okay.
We'll get a meeting in July to get it done.
And like Nancy said, there's a bunch that need to get approved and we need to get three people in a room and do it.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Okay.
We just need a little lead time.
Okay.
So any others?
Are we, so are we voting to accept the donation and then voting to allow the logo?
Yes. So we need to do two different votes. One is to accept the donation of $1,400. And then two, the second vote would be to approve, technically, we're approving the advertisement on the practice jersey because that's the policy, what the policy speaks to, in the form of a logo.
Would you prefer two motions or can you entertain a motion that does both?
We can do both, right? Let's do both.
All right. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the donation from Millis House of Pizza in the amount of $1,400 for the purpose of buying practice jerseys for the football team and that those jerseys will have the Millis House of Pizza logo as presented on the jersey.
A second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Carry.
Carry. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and before you leave, Mr. Cravey, we also realize that the event is on a Saturday and the last page of your packet has what would be the field use fee. We charge usually $250 for the football field use. And then the custodial, since this is a fundraiser for the football team, we would like to request that we be allowed to waive these fees and not charge, I forget the name of your nonprofit.
Mohawk Gridiron Club.
The Mohawk Gridiron Club, not charge them for either the football field use or the custodial costs for that day. Because in essence, we'd be charging them for something that benefits, something that is for.
Are we going to have a custodian work?
No, we will, we will just absorb the costs of the custodian for that day. The Millis Public Schools will. If, if the committee chooses to waive, we generally waive for other groups, we waive the field use fee, but we often still charge for the custodial fee.
What day of the week is June 23rd?
Saturday.
Saturday. So we don't have someone on duty? So we'd bring in a custodian on overtime for probably a six-hour shift, right? If it's five hours?
Yeah, the cost is on the.
Five, so you're doing five. Okay. Do I have a motion?
All right, I'll give it a try.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Roach? Yes.
I make a motion to waive the football field use fees of $250 and the custodial fees of $175 for a total cost of $425 for the use of, what's your nonprofit called again?
Mohawk Gridiron.
Mohawk Gridiron Club on June 23rd.
Okay, motion, a motion's been made. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been moved, a motion has been made and seconded. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
And I, I don't remember, remember the answer to this question. Have we, for other nonprofits, the one I'm thinking of that I know uses, Buddy Bull, Charles River Crowls not here, doesn't use it anymore. Did we waive custodial fees for them?
Not in my recollection.
We did for the baseball, though, didn't we, when they used the baseball field?
No, but the custodial, we didn't know. I, I cannot recall any time we've waived custodial fees. So we can do it on a case-by-case basis, but this is, this is the first time that I can remember since 2010 that we've waived. If you have it, if you believe you have it in the budget at the end of the year, I mean, it is an overtime, is that the correct rate?
This is, yes.
That's what I estimate. That's the highest rate I could estimate.
Is that overtime?
It depends on, it depends on who takes the ship. I have no way of knowing, so I just take a ballpark estimate.
I would argue too that this is in direct support of the football team and a school entity and a school and, and the, you know, a school-run program. So that could warrant us waiving the fees.
And Mr. Chair, I also think it's a community, bringing together the community event that also makes it unique. But it's true that we have not generally, or not in my recollection, ever waived custodial fees.
Doesn't mean we, doesn't mean we can't, just that we, we've never done that, so. Mr. Conroy, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Motion's been moved, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So just as parting shot, thank you for all that you're doing. You clearly are bringing energy. But as you proceed, any advertisement, any signs that are going to go out on that field, you need to do an inventory and you need to have a conversation with Mr. Grant and Ms. Gustafson so we can make sure that we approve that and we make sure everything's done to the letter of the policy and we'll, and so we have no problems in the future. So I have no doubt that that will, will be good.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so the next, let's move on to the superintendent's report. Please, help me.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We have, well, tomorrow and Thursday, we will complete all of our MCAS testing. It's been two months of testing. It's been extensive, the electronic, we, we chose as a district to, in every grade, grades three through eight, to go electronic with either iPads or Chromebooks. The upfront preparation for that is, has been huge, both for the tech department and the principals. The principals have to do a lot of organization on the front end of electronic MCAS testing. The good news is, is they are no longer packing up boxes of MCAS tests afterwards to mail back. But tomorrow in the high school, we finish up, well, actually, we will have two days of science, MCAS testing. And those are not electronic in grade 10. But they will be in the future as the state moves in this direction. So I just wanted to say that generally, things were, went well for our infrastructure. We found that we had to stagger login. And it actually wasn't our infrastructure as much as the tech department explained that. actually wasn't our infrastructure as much as the tech department explained that Pearson Servers Nation, or, yeah, Nationwide and in Massachusetts in particular, because the testing window is what it is, they, they found that it was a heavy burden for Pearson to manage, but I do believe, and our new commissioner of education is committed to making the process a more streamlined process and not having it be so burdensome for people. We, the, the good side is, we already today have access to the preliminary results from grades three to eight, now preliminary results are only multiple choice, so it gives us a snapshot of planning for remediation classes and things, also enrichment opportunities, but it's not the full results with the scoring of short, anything that is anything other than multiple choice, but it is much faster, and again, our new commissioner of education has said that that was his main goal.
Before we move on, and you may have said this, what, what percentages of the MCAS testing this year was electronic, was it all?
A hundred percent, three, grades three through eight.
And then ten was?
Grade ten is not electronic yet.
Not for us, or just for the state?
Not for anybody.
Okay.
We did, both in Millis and other high schools were chosen for, for a, an electronic pilot test of the grade ten, but it was just pilot questions and doesn't count at all, they were just, what they do is, is try out some questions, trying to get preparation for next year, I believe it's next year that they're going electronic in grade tens.
So when you, when you go into the summer, is, is there any, any enhancements that we need, is there technology, is there hotspots, whatever, or is this just a, the server, like you said, the servers at Pearson, it's not necessarily us, it was an overload of people all around the country, in Massachusetts, jumping on board, so if you, when you kind of debrief about this, and I'm sure some of it's operational, but is there infrastructure or resources that are needing to make this go smoother in the future?
I, I think there are some things, and our next meeting has our digital learning strategy with a presentation from.
Okay.
Jen Starr and her team, so I'll let her speak to that and I'll let her know that that's a question.
I was just gonna say, let her know that that question.
I do know that the Chromebooks seem to be a smoother device with which to do the electronic MCAS than the iPads, my own two children who are thirteen and sixteen in another district had the same thing with their iPads, but I think, you know, it's hard sometimes to discern what is the device and what is the network and what is then the Pearson servers, and the tech team can speak to that much better than I can.
Okay.
So, personnel update in your packets, you have two personnel sheets, we're gonna have to start making these blue sheets again, we always call them the blue sheets, but we are proud to have appointed our special education teacher at Clyde Brown to take the place of Diane Cotter, who's retiring, Christina Kalatsidis, and pardon my pronunciation if that's not correct, is joining us after having been a teacher at Sacred Heart School in Roslindale, and she's also worked in the Brookline Public Schools as a paraprofessional and a homework center instructor, she has a master's of education from Northeastern University and a bachelor in elementary education from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, so we're, we welcome Christina, also in our office, you may have met Becky Laverne, who is our part-time accounts payable clerk, Maureen McDermott retired in our office after twenty-four years because she, in the day of her retirement, she had a new granddaughter too, and she's helping care for those grandchildren, so Shane Lee Volpe is taking over more hours, but it is a split position, Becky will work up to fifteen hours per week, usually twelve to, twelve to fifteen hours, she has a bachelor's of science in management from Bridgewater State University and has been an accountant for fifteen years, she's already hit the ground running and is doing a fabulous job, so, plus she's a delight, we're very pleased with our two hires so far, we also have hires currently interviewing point, a point-five preschool teacher at Clyde Brown, a full-time high school special education teacher, and at the middle school, a point-five special education, point-five, point-five teacher and point-five paraprofessional, those demonstration, interviews have taken place and demonstration lessons in front of students are happening last week and this week, and perhaps a little bit next week, and we should be able to wrap up those hires, those are our only openings.
So one full-time high school sped teacher.
Yes.
A point-five.
Preschool.
Preschool.
At Clyde Brown.
And then you have a, a middle school teacher, a point-five, and a point-five-aid.
Yes.
At the middle school.
Yes.
Okay.
In your packets, is there, are there any questions about that? In your packets, you also have an update on our last professional development day on May eighteenth, we have transition meetings in which we have teams get together and meet with the grade above them and below them to help students smooth transition from one grade to another, also to personalize their educational program, we had also some ESPT training, which is the state mandated screening that we must do now for substance abuse, and the nurses were trained and the school adjustment counselors, and then screening letters have gone home for the opt-out, but the, the screening is happening in grade seven, and we are required actually to do it in two, two grades, so we'll be doing two grades next year, this year, with the changes in our team, we needed to get everybody trained first, the, also, we've completed the social emotional screening that we do three times per year, you learned about that at our, at our previous school committee meeting, and then finally, two more things in your packet, we are offering summer professional development opportunities for our staff focused on project-based learning and using design thinking in their project-based learning, so we have three teachers attending the Buck Institute project-based learning, and the Buck Institute is the gold standard in project-based learning, Molly Cicardo, I have it written down, Molly Cicardo, Julie Muldoon, and Michelle Adams, Michelle Adams and Molly, Molly Cicardo, grade six, Julie Muldoon and Michelle Adams in grade five, and then finally, a handout from an initiative that we've been working on with the Highlander Institute, the Fuse Fellow, we have Chris Nardone in grade four as our Fuse Fellow, who is training to be a trainer for other districts around blended learning and personal, using technology to personalize learning, and we have people from other districts then coming to work with our teachers, and those are called lighthouse classrooms, we have three grade levels, we're focusing on grades four, five, and six, and this is to deepen personalized learning through project-based and blended learning using technology, so in grade four, we have Chris Nardone and Sarah Alhaza, grade five, Michelle Adams and Julie Muldoon, and grade six, Kelly Rao, Mara Robinson, and Jan McGuire, it's very exciting work, and the teachers are very energized around this, and we really appreciate their hard work and enthusiasm, that is the professional development, and then finally, in your packets, you may have noticed, two, three weeks ago, that U.S. News and World Report announced their best schools in designation, and we were wondering why Millis was not on their list this year, because that is normally a list that we are designated one of the best high schools in the country, so Mr. Malaney did a little digging, and by all criteria that they use, he, he put this into a nice memo for you, they have four, four steps of the process, and we qualify under all, every single step of that process, step number one is that students exceed their expectations in their states and our MCAS scores, and this is for the high school are well above the state average, with ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our students being in the top two categories in English and ninety-five percent in math, so we, we know we met that criteria, step two is that underserved students need to perform better than the state average, and those two categories in Massachusetts are economically disadvantaged and high needs, which include special education students, we performed nine and ten percent above the state average in that category, our graduation rates meet the threshold, they had a very low threshold of eighty percent, we have ninety-six point one percent, and that's actually low for us, the year that the data comes from, and then there's a, finally, step four is the college readiness index, and compared to other high schools that made the list, our college readiness index is higher than many of those that are on the list, so of course, trying to get a response from a publication as large as U.S. News and World Report is difficult, but we're trying to, Mr. Malaney contacted them to see where the error is in their crunching of the data, because by every indication, we belong on that list, and we have in the past, and we were surprised not to be on that list, so we know that our high school students are performing better than many of the high schools on that list.
So, and I can appreciate that, but at the end of the day, the list is the list, but our numbers are the numbers, and they're getting a good education, and it hasn't changed pretty much, so.
No.
The only thing that changes, we're not on the list.
We do, we do.
It'd be nice to be on the list.
Yeah, we like the list.
But our, but the quality of the education has not really changed, but I, I understand, he put some time and effort into this.
Yes.
He conducted an investigation, that's what he called it, I liked it.
I appreciate, and he's been very diligent about doing the comparison and being on top of this, so it's not the only list that gets publicized, but we.
No, I think it's fair, I think it's fair what he did, and quite honestly, I think he did it with numbers opposed to just saying, we should be on it just because, right?
No, correct.
Because we have, like, he backed it up, so.
We have the data to back it up.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other investigations you want to update as on?
No, thankfully, this is the only investigation we're involved in.
Mr. Conroy, it looked like you had something to say.
This is now public record, so we can, we can put it out there.
We can publish, right, the investigation.
Yeah, I don't know if there's been any talk, if anybody saw it, and people mentioned, well, where's Millis, but I thought it was worth bringing to the attention of the committee and getting it on camera, that we believe it's truly just an error somewhere in their data collection.
We're a small, little blip on the radar screen, sometimes people forget us, okay, next on the, oh, is the chairman's report, summer meeting dates for strategic planning, I'd like to just talk about the dates when we're, when we're in the working session, when we're talking about kind of the, the strategic planning process, and we can talk about dates at that point, so I, I'll save that for the working session, next is the subcommittee reports, we don't, Carrie, are you on the elementary school building?
Yes, but I, I'm not prepared to make an update at this time.
Okay, then we will wait until June nineteenth, the nineteenth is the next, nineteenth for an update, but clearly, as you look out the window, things are going on over there at the, at the new Clyde Brown, right, any correspondence?
I did include in your packets also the calendar for the upcoming year that we have sent out with conference dates, the, the committee had approved the calendar.
That's right.
The conference dates don't alter the calendar in any way, but it, the, I, the principals just needed more time to discuss this, conferences for K to eight will be on November seventh and eighth, for the high school, they are only on November eighth, because this is, last year was the first year we added time for the high school, and a half-day is sufficient, so those are two half-days, the evening conferences will be the following week, on November thirteenth for the middle school, fourteenth for Clyde Brown, and fifteenth for the high school, so we will, of course, be sending this out at the beginning of the school year as well, and we sent it out a little while ago, didn't we?
A couple of weeks ago.
And just for the committee's information, we are almost ready to send out the survey on the nineteen-twenty calendar, so we just, that'll probably be next week, we'll get through graduation first.
Yes. Anything, anything else?
No.
Okay, so we are going to move from open session to working session to talk about strategic planet, strategic planning and budget, strategic budgeting, also, we are going to, after the working session, go into executive session for contract negotiations for Valani Malaney, Lynn Blanchett, and Wigan.
And Bush.
And Bush, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Dave.
And, and Bush, so we have to take a motion to go from open session to working session, and then to go into executive session, you wanna handle that one, Mark?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn to working session for strategic planning and budget, from there, we will move to executive session, not to return on camera, and then not meet again until June nineteenth.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, see you on the nineteenth, see you at graduation.